Go ahead and call the September 8, 2020 regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer? Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everyone for coming out and on this Tuesday night. And just one thing to make you aware of, this weekend would have been the 20th Annual Bristol Rhythm and Roots, but unfortunately that event has been postponed to next year. But a lot of the businesses downtown still need your support, and they're also donating a portion, a lot of the businesses, a portion of the proceeds back to the birthplace of country music and believe in Bristol. So if you're able to come downtown this weekend and shop or eat and just help those businesses out because missing that event really hurts them. And also, as we move past Labor Day and into the fall, again, just another reminder to be vigilant, to social distance when you can, to wear a mask, to wash your hands, because we want to make sure that our businesses remain open as well as our schools and that our community's safe. With that, does anybody have anything? Dad?
I do have one thing unrelated on one thing that most folks, some folks might be interested in. On September the 13th at four in the park, we have the Prayer in the Park service coming up. I know that usually traditionally, I believe, has been held in late May, early June or May, but they moved it to September the 13th this year, and that's at four o'clock. And I believe they might be doing a second one in late October, early November as well if you can't make this one. So just want to make people aware of that.
Comeback Park?
Yes, Cumbria Park.
Starting at 3:45, you can start at four.
What he said.
Starting at 3:45, you can start at four.
Does anybody else have anything, Dad? Mr. City Manager, you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, it's, I hate to even say it, but it is becoming the fall time of the year, and leaves will start falling here shortly. And it seems like usually around this time of year, we do start getting a lot of phone calls from citizens in regards to leaf pickup as the leaves begin to fall. I'd just like to remind everybody that, you know, we try our very best to get to all the leaves as quickly as possible, but sometimes we have staff out sick or they have other obligations, and we do run shorthanded it sometimes, but our staff really does try to get to those leaves as quickly as possible. And I'll continue to try to remind people as we get further into the fall season. But if you do have any concerns or questions about leaf pickup, don't hesitate to reach out to us, and we'll try to address any concerns as quickly as we can.
All right. Next item number C, matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda items. We did have one person sign up, Ms. Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I will remind council at this time that as you enter into this meeting and some meetings to follow, you'll be talking about zoning codes and ordinances and so forth. Let me remind you, please, that the zoning ordinances and the codes are what allow things to happen. Be very, very diligent and very, very careful as you discuss the codes and the ordinances. Now, as a former member of the Planning Commission, I understand what this situation is. I know how it works. I know how the games can be played. I know how they better not be played. So please be very diligent, gentlemen, and remember, there are consequences, sometimes good, sometimes bad, sometimes a little bit of both. But your actions have consequences. Now, the more you think things through, the more you can deal with certain of the consequences before they happen, if you think things through. That means beyond this minute, beyond tomorrow, beyond next week. How does this fit into a picture? Have a philosophy. Know what you expect, what you want, and what might help us get it. Know also that your actions are accountable. You are accountable for your actions. Believe me, you will be accountable for your actions. Be very careful, please. Be very diligent, and keep uppermost a couple of things. Number one, have an idea of what you want our city to be. What is your philosophy? You want us to look like a Mexican border town? I don't. You want us to look like the armpit of the world? I don't. Do you want us to have some beautification? Yes, I do. It pays off. Do you want us to have proper zoning to protect the things that we have that we know are good? Yes. Protect the good, get rid of the bad, but first you have to determine which is which. Now, I will end with one thought that is always uppermost in my mind. Buying a home is the biggest investment most people make in a lifetime. It may take them 25 years to pay for that home. It may take them 30 years to pay for it. Stay out of the way. Anytime you can help people better their lives, it will probably better our city. Now, that's arguable to a point. But remember, folks, it's hard to buy a house. Most people have a very difficult, long, hard time. Whose back is going to carry the load you put on this community? You put it. Whose back will carry the load you put on this community? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie. You were the only one to sign up, but if anyone else would like to speak? All right. Move to item number D, adoption of the agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley. Yes. Item number one, a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission on the draft revised zoning ordinance and map. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the city council and ask Mr. Pollard, the Chair of the Planning Commission, to open the public hearing as well as recognize the members of the Planning Commission, Daniel Schu and Ed Harlow and Vice Mayor Farnham that are here as well.
I call this meeting and public hearing of the Bristol, Virginia Planning Commission to order, and I do want to mention very briefly that we do want to hear from the public. That's what this process is all about. We're trying to make things better, not because some businesses asked for it, but because we want the city to be a better place to live. We do have a full copy of the proposed code on the back table. If you want to get a copy, it's also available online, or you can ask either the city staff or members of the Planning Commission. We will help you in any way that we possibly can. We want to get feedback. And there are two additions that I might point out as well. There's some additional code related to flood control, and there is a placeholder for some changes that Ms. Marnie has recommended that be addressed. I'm not sure if they used to be in the code and were moved at some point, but they do need to be addressed, and they are not addressed in this version because of lack of time, and that way we can handle them properly and with due diligence involved with that. And I do call this meeting to order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Ms. Morgan, if you want to give a brief staff report?
Mayor and council members, I will not do very much of a report because you all have heard this already, and sorry, Chairman and Planning Commissioners, but just a quick update where we are. This is actually the third public hearing we'll have had in the, for the draft ordinance, revised ordinance, as well as the maps. And there's just kind of since last year, what we've been through, and even before the first draft, obviously, the Planning Commission was working for a long time over many meetings to get to that point. And then the ordinance itself is also includes the map, zoning maps. And what I thought I'd do is just quickly just give one slide that shows the comments that we've recorded to date. I don't know if you all can turn around and see those. And we've had, and I don't, there may be some folks in the room, I'm not sure, to give additional comments, but from the first, the public hearings we've had with the Planning Commission and the city council in August, we had five property owners that objected to, almost all these comments are on the maps, not the ordinance itself, but objected to the change of zone that we were proposing due to the current or past business history of the property. We had one property owner from Solar Hill who questioned the rezoning that we were trying to do to make all Solar Hill zoned R2. And then, of course, we had residents from Robin Circle opposing the rezoning adjoining to their properties. One resident from Massachusetts Avenue concerning FRD zoning adjacent to her property, both of which are now zoned M2, her property and the adjoining property. And then as far as the last two bullet points, those are on the actual text. We had one property owner in one of the historic districts just ask about awarding change. He owns a property that's not a historic structure, and he wanted to make sure that this ordinance didn't apply to that. So, and then, as Mr. Pollard mentioned, the state had some recommendations on some changes on the floodplain district and some related definitions that we need to probably, we will need to incorporate in the draft. And then just again, the public hearings and the next steps would be any and all comments that we have received would go back to the Planning Commission at their next meeting on the 21st of this month. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. We did have one person to sign up, Ms. Marnie?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I'm a former Planning Commission member. I have two items here with which I have personal experience, and I think that I should call your attention to these two items because they bear an enormous consequence, if you want to use that word, but they have a great bearing on the safety of our community. Number one, well, safety and the comfort, let's say, of our community, desirability. Number one, this actually happened. This is not made up. This actually happened. There was someone who wanted to take an R3 area and use it to house motorcycles over the winter. Now, he said it would probably be, this was in an area that has since been developed, but at the time, it was not very developed, but it did become developed later. And he said, oh, it would probably be just two or three, and we said, well, for how long? What, you know, we asked all the appropriate questions. The upshot of this situation is this. If you allow, now, I'm using R3, it could be anything, but I'm using R3 for purpose of discussion. If you allow one thing to go into R3, and you say, well, that isn't going to matter because it's way off out there and there's nothing around it, there's your mistake. There's your mistake. Number one, if you allow anything different in an R3 or any other code area, it is applicable to any R3. You cannot say, and this was the argument being made to our Planning Commission, well, yeah, it's R3, but we're way off out there, it isn't going to bother anybody. But what he missed was that if we allowed it in that R3, it was also allowable in any other R3, anywhere in the city. And therein lies the kicker. It was not limited to only that one out here where there wasn't anybody. Uh-uh. If it's R3, it's R3, whether it's there, here, or here. We could have had 150 motorcycles out there, and it would have been allowable anywhere in the city. I counted up in my own neighborhood, among four houses, there could have been 46 motorcycles. Think about that one a little bit. You know where I live. I would have had the Attorney General down here by that time. Be very careful. What applies in one area, one zoning area, is applicable in all areas with that same zoning unless there is some sort of special something or the other, and that's another issue to be careful of. One more minute, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Secondly, be very vigilant in encouraging foot traffic, in particular, foot traffic through the residential areas. Now, I have been through this. I know what I'm talking about, and so do the police. Believe me. Be very careful about that. This is one of the easiest, best, nicest ways burglars can scout a neighborhood. We had that happen in our neighborhood. Drugs were dealt, houses were broken into, few little nice things like that. We were afraid we were going to have a few head knockings before it was over, but thank God we did, and our wonderful police department moved on that very quickly, very quickly. But it happened because people had the permission, quote unquote, to casually walk through the neighborhoods. What they were doing was scouting out what they call the Silver District. That's what it used to be called. Be very careful, folks. I personally, by chance, broke up a burglary ring. I did it by calling the police and telling them what I saw, and thank God they moved like gangbusters and broke it up. So be careful. That is an easy way for burglars to case areas and to snatch a child out of the front yard. God forbid that would ever happen. It could happen quickly, and on a street like Euclid Avenue, a car can pull up, grab somebody, bam, you're gone, and you're on that interstate in one of four directions before the police ever get the call. Be careful. Please be very, very careful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie. You were the only one to sign up to speak at the public hearing. However, if anyone here would like to speak, you can go ahead and do so. I think Ms. Morgan had a comment to read that somebody had emailed.
Yes, thank you. I'd gotten an email this afternoon. They wanted me to share this, if you all take the time. This is from Bill Lancaster, 248 Robin Circle. I believe he attended the city council public hearing. He said, I will not be able to make this council meeting tonight. I would like to make sure that the council knows that me and my wife are against any rezoning, that we change the landscape behind our home. Our home is our biggest investment, and to think that business, hotel, or condos could be built looking in our backyard is worrisome to us. We beg that if anything is done behind our home on 248 Robin Circle, that the buffer zone of the current field between us and Southern State's fence remain in the buffer zone at least. As our city continues to make real estate investments, how much money, sorry, he said, as the city continues to make bad real estate investments, how much money would the city spend and tax us for cleaning up the current fertilizer business before it would meet the guidelines for any other business or residence? Please, we urge the city to continue to look at the vacant somewhat developed land available at the Falls Development, or the vacant buildings along Linden Drive, or the land that was to be developed across from Dollar General on Lee Highway and behind the Verizon Store. It makes no sense to just continue to tear up land and continue to encroach on neighborhoods like ours. And then he says, on a side note, Mr. Whitley's saying that he represents the wishes of our neighborhood are wrong, his opinions of changing the zoning so that more retirement living could be built behind our home. This wouldn't be in his backyard, it would be in ours, and he's never spoken with us other than putting his letter in our mailbox, which we were not happy about. Please express our concerns and keep us posted. And that's all he wrote.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further comment, then I'll go ahead and close the hearing from the city council side. Mr. Pollard?
Thank you very much for those comments. I will remind you that we are still ready and willing to hear any additional comments that may come up. You can provide those to either ourselves or to city staff. And again, there's a full copy of the proposed recommendations on the back and online. At this point, I do close the public hearing for the Bristol, Virginia Planning Commission. Thank you.
Now that the public hearings closes, before we move on, when you put that timeline up there, I think if it's possible to have a joint work session between maybe sometime next week, one evening, for the Planning Commission meets again, because they've heard public comments, we've heard public comments, you've had people come in during the open house and email them, I think for everybody to get together and hear all the comments and discuss would make the process move a little quicker than them just, you know, here's what they've heard, and they make a recommendation, and then it comes to us, and we might have heard a little something different. So I think if it's possible to do that next, I think if we could do that next week, it would be before they meet, when we could just take one evening and kind of go over. I think you've already kind of bullet pointed the areas of concern, but I think it would smooth the process out. So, okay. All right. We'll move on to item number two, approval of a lease for a 2021 Mack 20-yard trash truck. Staff report?
Counsel, before you deny it as a lease for a 2021 Mack 20-yard trash truck, this lease was in our fiscal year 21 budget for this past year, and this begins the process of purchasing that truck. This truck will replace a 2014 Mack with over 11,000 hours. The new Mack trash truck will be purchased on the Sourcewell contract number 081716-NAF satisfying procurement requirements. This particular truck could take one year from order date to be delivered. The cost of the truck is $263,413. A request for proposal was put out for financing the purchase with open dates from August 10 of 2020 to August 24 of 2020. The RFP was advertised in the August 7, 2020 edition of the Bristol Herald Courier. There was only one response to the RFP, VMO Harris Equipment Finance. Semi-annual payments on the 60-month lease will be $28,505.81 with an interest rate of 2.92%, and these budgets, these payments are budgeted in the solid waste disposal fund.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Public comment, again, Ms. Marnie, you had, you're the only one that signed up. You wish?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. Anything Public Works wants, I'm for. I think they deserve anything they can get. I remember the days when the head of the Public Works came to the council down in the other building, and he said, we, very seriously, we are driving a 30-year-old truck. We have put it together with wire, string, paper clips. We cannot do anymore. We have to have another truck. 30 years, folks. Anything they want, I'm for.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie. Anybody else, even though she's the only one? Anybody? All right. What's the pleasure of council?
I move to approve the lease for the trash truck as presented.
Second.
Okay. The motion by Councilman Osburn, and a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Any discussion?
Yes, I have one question for the CFO. What's the total cash outlay for the lease, for the terms of the lease versus a cash buy of the truck?
What's the total cash outlay through the terms of the lease? How much cash would we pay out to lease it over the terms of the lease versus cash to buy the vehicle?
It's on page 14 of the agenda packet.
Is it?
Yes.
I was looking for it.
Is the difference?
Page 14.
And it's a semi-annual payment.
So is the total 287?
285.
And what's the cash buy, 263?
263,413.
How many years is this?
Five years.
So it's 20,000?
While she's looking for that, what was the interest rate on this?
It's two something.
2.92. The interest paid over the five-year term is 21,645.
So what's the, so what's the interest we're making on our cash in the cash accounts?
Well, I think what we have to remember here, this is being bought out of the solid waste disposal fund, which is different than being bought from the general fund monies that are set aside.
Just make versus buy.
You know, I don't know the specific interest rate as of today, but...
Right now, interest rates are down. I think we're earning overall less than 1%. Actually, Home Trust has locked us in, I'm sorry, at their rates, so we're actually earning. It's less than 2 right now.
Wouldn't it be better just to pay cash?
Well, I mean, I'll just say no. I mean, you're at a, with the solid waste disposal fund, you're buying equipment that is used relatively heavily. These are capital leases, which means we own them at the end of the lease. These vehicles last anywhere from six to eight years typically, and so we'll... These vehicles last anywhere from six to eight years typically, and so we'll own this once the lease is paid off. The other thing that we have to remember is our total position with the solid waste disposal fund is negative at the moment, and we're slowly, every single year, trying to get that closer to zero. And when you have a large cash outlay, that does not necessarily help. And then the other thing we have to remember, the solid waste disposal fund is budget neutral. So in order, when we went through the budget process this year, we did not budget an additional $263,000 in cash to purchase this item. If we would have, the only way to come up with that funds would have been to cut further expenses or raise the rates.
Does the lease cover the maintenance through the period, or do we have to cover maintenance?
No, the lease doesn't cover the maintenance.
The current vehicle we're using is a 2014, and it has 11,000 miles. What happens to that vehicle?
Well, what will happen? That vehicle, right now, we have five trash trucks. Two are, I won't say unusable, but they're as close to unusable as possible. We would then put one of the newer, one of the, I guess, newer trucks we have would be a backup, and we would run this truck plus another, we received a new truck last year, I believe, as well. So we'd have two new trash trucks on the road for our residents, and the most recent vehicles would then be used as backups.
Let me clarify on what the Vice Mayor said. It's not 11,000 miles, it's 11,000 hours, correct?
Right.
Sorry, did I say miles?
Yes.
Hours.
So the average lifespan of a trash truck is, what did we say, 5,000 to 10,000 hours?
Well, really, over 10,000 hours is where it starts to need, needs to be replaced. I think I've had conversations in the past that the city needs to start looking as how to purchase or finance those trucks when they get to the 7,000 to 9,000 hour range because of the amount of time that's on them. The other thing you have to remember, these trucks, every time that truck stops, that compactor in that truck goes back and forth three times each stop. So on average, there's about 700 stops a day, probably about 350 per truck. So you multiply that by three, you're looking at basically 1,200 times you've got the compactor going back and forth inside that trash truck compacting trash. I know in the truck that this would be replacing, I think it's this truck, they have replaced the floor at least twice, and they've replaced the sides that many times as well, from where it's just, you know, it just gets worn out with that much use every single day.
And how many hours does one go through in a year?
Well, I mean, it's ran five days a week, so on average, what you have with this truck's 1,833 hours.
Well, here's my comments on, on this truck and the situation with the landfill. The landfill's a pig. It's cleaning this city's clock, and we haven't figured out how to really handle that yet. This is a topic that needs to be talked about all the time, running different scenarios, till we can get our heads wrapped around how to get that landfill profitable and sustainable. We've got the city back on its feet financially, closed out the year with $19 million. Unfortunately, this landfill is a separate entity of its own, which is still losing money that the city is subsidizing. The taxpayers are subsidizing it every year, on top of their $33 a month. It's coming out of the city coffers. Now, we're in a position, and we're always going to be in this position, where equipment is running ragged and needing repaired and replaced. But it's a hard swill to pop, it's a hard pill to swallow for me on this end of it, knowing that the city is finally doing halfway decent and got a little bit of money to start replacing and doing stuff right. Now, we can find that, we can lease this truck to an entity that's already losing money and can't pay its bills, and it costs us $21,600 in additional interest instead of writing a check, and just add that to more of a loss for the pig. Or we can figure out a way to write a check for this. The taxpayers are going to pay for this truck one way or another. And the way to get out of debt is to quit borrowing money. And a lease is a commitment, and in my mind, it is debt. You're liable. That check's got to be wrote every year. I think we need to figure out a way to write this check and be done with it, and not go into any more debt. And we need to constantly, always be talking about this landfill. What can we do? And run every scenario regardless of how stupid somebody might think it is. If you think it's got a possibility of working, we need to be talking about it. Because we have got to stop all this money just going down the toilet, draining this city dry. And that landfill is our biggest issue. And here, we're fixing to go deeper in debt as a city for a truck that we probably need. I'm not denying we don't need this truck. We need this truck. But we need to pick the best avenue in which to obtain this truck. And debt is not always the answer. Tighten that belt up, sucking it up.
Yeah, we should pay cash for it.
Is what this city's got to do.
We should pay cash for it, especially since our money's earning less than the interest on the lease. It's a no-brainer.
If you pay cash for it, you're going to be transferring funds from the general fund over to the solid waste disposal fund to pay cash for it. So $263,000 is roughly 2 and 1/2 cents of everybody's taxes that's being paid this year is going to cover the cost of that truck.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm going to chime in on that real quick. That is correct, if you want to do the math that way right there. I'm not going to dispute that. But the bottom line is that whether it's 262 and finance another 21,6 on top of that, it's still the taxpayers' money, whether it comes out of the city coffers or not. They're paying $1.17 on their property taxes. They're paying $33 a month for their trash pickup. The city taxpayer and ratepayers on the landfill is paying all the bills, regardless of how you want to slot where it's coming from and how you receive it, it still falls on the backs of the taxpayers.
I agree with that 100 percent. And if another entity owned that landfill, guess who would be paying for the other entities? Trucks and collection vehicles and equipment? The residents of the city.
I understand that, but the difference there is, one would be privately owned, and they would be, they would be running it, and they would have never been as crazy and ignorant with the expenditures and the purchases of it out the gate, and they'd be profitable. The problem is, government owns it, and they don't protect the taxpayers' dime. There lies the problem.
Back to the trash truck specifically, just so I can be clear on this. So the difference that I'm hearing is, if we write this check, we'd have to find over a quarter of a million dollars somewhere else to cut from, or move it, transfer it from the general fund to cover it, which would not be ideal. So if I do my math correctly, if we lease this over five years, it's an additional $4,300 per year. It's $21,000 over the course of five years. Is that, is that what I'm reading?
Yes, sir.
So it's additional $4,300 per year, $4,329. And I think that that is, you know, I don't want to pay more money than I have to, but I think $4,300 a year additional, overall from the entire, you know, fund that we're paying for this from, is preferable to trying to find a $263,000 cut elsewhere, in my mind.
Wow. You do this 10 times, and now all of a sudden, it's 200,000. You do this 20 times, it's 400,000. See, that's, that's the logic. That's all wrong with that logic.
With all due respect, Mr. Lum Power, where do you want to cut the 263 from?
We have all kinds of cash. Find it. We have, we have it set aside in an emergency fund. This is an emergency. The truck's falling apart. Take it out and buy the truck.
Is an emergency if you knew there was a problem?
Anytime you have cash on hand, and you're earning less than the interest that you got a lease, anybody with the right mathematics pays cash. That's the way it works.
Is an emergency if you've known there's a problem?
And I'm a taxpayer, they're a taxpayer. I don't want $20,000 over five years or $20,000 over six months.
I'm a taxpayer too, and I don't want over a quarter of a million dollars moved from somewhere else to cover something.
Well, your logic doesn't work, I'm sorry.
I call for the vote.
I'm good.
All right. Go ahead, then, then, Clark, if you want to call the roll.
I just want to check, who made the motion?
The motion...
That's me.
Was made by Councilman Osborne and seconded by the Vice Mayor.
To approve the lease.
Farnum?
Yes.
Lum Power?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Item number three, supplemental appropriation of $848,747. Staff report.
Mayor and members of council, this item is a supplemental appropriation of $848,747. This includes general fund appropriations of $92,690 for, comprised of a, an education grant for the police department, fire department refund, $6,114, judicial alternative sentencing program grant funds of $64,928, street and engineering division carryover of fiscal year '20, stormwater fees collected of $18,648, capital projects fund of $115,435, and CARES Act COVID-19 funds of $640,622. Staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed.
Okay. Ms. Marnie, you were the only one to... Okay. What's the pleasure of counsel?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Osborne, second by Vice Mayor Farnum. Any discussion on this item?
The only thing I wanted to point out was, with some of this COVID-19-related stimulus money that we're getting ready to kind of divvy up to use, a good portion is going to the school system. And I know that, I don't see the superintendent here this evening, but I've spoken with him about how the schools are doing, especially after being closed for so long and going back to school now, because some school systems are all virtual, and we have a hybrid plan where some students are in the classroom, some students have chosen to do virtual, 100 percent from home. You know, I've spoken with the superintendent, I call him a lot, and I probably call him too much, he's probably starting to get tired of me, but just asking how things are going, and I think things are going well this school year. You know, they've had some extra expenses related to all that, so having some of this COVID CARES Act stimulus money go to the school system, I think will, will definitely help get them to where they need to be, so I think that's a good thing.
Item for clarification on the $20,000 to the fire department for washers and extractors. So the equipment that they're using at Station One, they're currently taking everything that they need to clean to Station One, is that correct?
Yes.
So is this, what we're buying, is this the exact same thing that they have at Station One, or is this better than what they have, or?
I think it's comparable. I don't think it's, I don't know if it's the exact model, but it's a...
It's a newer version of the same stuff?
Right.
And what is this, the $10,000 for building modifications that I saw on here? It didn't, didn't break it down.
Which one?
Toward the bottom of the list. Those various building modifications to city buildings to mitigate exposure risk to COVID-19.
I don't have all the details in front of me right with me, but I...
What, Mr. McCullough? Can you come up in the microphone?
It was for, just miscellaneous things like putting up Plexiglas guards in front of certain offices that might need it, or trying to separate people that are working close together, things like that.
Any, any other questions, discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Lum Power?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Item number four, discussion of funding for Discover Bristol. For those of you, mostly y'all were here, I think, at that meeting, but last month, we had an initial discussion talking about what to do going forward in terms of funding these outside agencies, in particular, Discover Bristol. And, you know, as I say, we started that discussion. This is the next step in that, and we'll continue to have it. I think it's a good time to have that discussion where it's not a part of our annual budget process, but just to talk in, in general terms about where we need to be in terms of funding that. And, you know, the one thing I think that came out of that last discussion was, there was a consensus that we needed to reinvest a portion of the lodging taxes that we receive back to Discover Bristol, to the Convention Visitors Bureau. I think, I feel safe in saying, I think there was a consensus that some level, we needed to reinvest. So now we need to take that discussion to the next level and try to narrow that down and see if we can come up with, you know, a number or a range, or get somewhere in the ballpark to help both the city manager and the CFO as we go forward. That all opened the floor.
Well, I'll just start and kind of throw out some things I've thought about, and I've talked with, with other members about this. So last fiscal year, we had $1.3 million in lodging taxes come in, and we only provided, we actually ended up not giving the CBB any more money than, than last year, and actually they took a hit. If we were to give, you know, 20 percent, that'd be $260,000, or even 10 percent would be $130,000 if we're going off those numbers in the last fiscal year, which would be a, be a market increase from where we were this previous fiscal year. And I think that one thing that I would like to see is a set percentage, so that way, we're not coming back. As you've said, Mayor and Mr. Farnum, we're not coming back every year arguing over, you know, $30,000 or $50,000. This way, it's, you have a set amount, and, you know, you have an option, in my mind, to say, you know, this is the minimum, the minimum you're going to get is $10,000. I believe, as you said, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, if there's a certain special situation, maybe we can give them more money if they need it. But, but I think that we need a, need a base number, and I think that a percentage would be better, because then they, they have a general idea of what they're going to be working with, and they say, hey, if we can produce more, you know, 10 percent of 1.3 is 130, but 10 percent of 13 million is 1.3, you know, if things increase by tenfold. So I would like to see a percentage as a base, and not have, not have this discussion every year.
Well, that's what I've been saying for a year and a half now. Set percentage.
Yeah, I think what I hear, what you're saying is a percentage, but, you know, let's say there's a global pandemic and the lodging tax is zero. So it doesn't necessarily mean these agencies, like the CBB, the Country Music Museum, I believe in Bristol, even I'll loop all together, are not working, because they're still trying to work, and I think you can make the argument, coming out of a pandemic, they're working even harder to try to get us back to normal, to bring tourism, tourism dollars into the city. So a percentage makes sense, but, you know, maybe even like a base, this is the minimum that you'll get, and a maximum, too. So, right, if, if the lodging tax is $10 million and there's a 10 percent thing, you know, does the CBB need a million dollars? Ms. Reinhardt, I know you'd probably love that.
I'm sure she wouldn't, wouldn't turn it down. I understand what you're saying. I wouldn't necessarily, I think for purposes of this, and the mayor and myself discussed this, I think for purposes of this, we should just look at Discover Bristol and not even mess with... BCM, although we, they do need more money, obviously, in Believe in Bristol. But, I get what you're saying, ten percent of zero is still zero. Um, you could, you could have a, you could have a basement number. Um, but hopefully we don't have another global pandemic, you know, but, but if we do, that's a bridge we can cross when we come to it, but we could have a, we could have a basement number that we could.
Yeah.
A minimum.
Well, and, and like I say, we started this process talking about Discover Bristol, but ultimately, at some point throughout the fall and into the winter, before we get to the budget, it would also be nice to bring in the other outside agencies that continually, uh, come up in this discussion, which is the Birthplace of Country Music and Believe in Bristol, and look at, uh, you know, which, which streams you would use, um, and, and do that. But I think we can start with the CBB and get to some kind of number. Um, Mr. Christian, if, do you have that chart from the last meeting that showed that? The percentage of funding, I think that may kind of help us move from just saying, yeah, we want a percentage, but to kind of look where that might fall. Or at least give us a range.
Are we talking about a percentage for just the chamber, or a percentage for all the not, outside agencies, BCM, Believe in Bristol, and, um, whatever? Were we talking that, or are we, are we talking exclusively about the chamber?
Or, I think right now we're talking exclusively, exclusively the chamber, but again, when we start talking about the other agencies, I guess, you, you have to balance it all out, so. Um, but I think if we start with one and see, um, you know, if it's something, you know, is, uh, somebody wants this amount, and then that amount, and they're both coming out of the same pot of money, then you might realize when you add them up, it's more than, than we need to be given out of that pot, so.
Okay, well, what I'm going to go to on that is, that's what I gathered here. If you start breaking it up into individual entities out there, and you set, let's just say this, you set ten percent for this one, then the next one come in, and you say, okay, we'll do three percent for this one over here, and then another one come in, oh, well, we'll do four percent for this one over here. The next thing you know, you're going to be up twenty-plus percent, uh, really, really quick. And here's another thing we need to keep in mind, move slow. We don't need to set a system up in place that is going to, um, one, hurt the taxpayers any more than, than need be. And two, it needs to be fair across the board with everybody. And three, we need to keep in mind that anything we agree upon today at a ten percent rate, or a twenty percent rate, or whatever we set the rate to be, in just a few short years, if November goes according to plan, then there is going to be massive amounts of money flowing. So, we need to take everything as the big picture and move slow on this, because whatever rate you set in two to three years could be triple or quadruple the amount of money going into these outside agencies, so be very careful.
And that's a.
What are we saying, a percent for?
Lodging tax, which, right now, I think.
A percent of lodging dollars that come in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's one point three, one point three million dollars is what the city got last year in lodging taxes.
Yeah.
So if we set a percentage aside for lodging taxes, it could go from one point three this year, one point five next year, and then it could go to three million the year after that, and six million shortly down the road. So whatever percentage we set has the potential to be, end up with some very large numbers.
Well, I mean, uh, uh, again, we, we, we don't know what the future holds yet, but I would say if, if things work the way a lot of us would hope, um, you'd have a lot of tourism, so you'd want, again, it's about reinvesting back into that product, and, uh, you'd need to market not just, um, uh, a potential, um, resort, but, but the other things that people could do, to get them to spend even more money here. So, um, yeah, while there'd be more money, I think you'd have a lot of people coming, and, and would need to let them know other places, so, um, you know, that's why, to me, the percentage makes sense because it, it gives back, uh, to, and it gives them an incentive. Right now, there is no really incentive, um, the funding is just, you know, what we determine year to year, and that's where, when you look at that, um, and that's by percentage, but it's, you know, for a long time was somewhere, it looks like around, um, fifteen, sixteen percent, and then in the last few years, it's dropped down, uh, much, well under, um, ten percent, so. You know, and, and during that whole period, the amount of lodging tax has continually gone up, so, you know, there's no correlation between what we're reinvesting back into tourism and that number, that's why I was kind of get a sense of where, where that should be.
That's what we need to figure out, we need to figure out what is the percentage, and it needs, and is it going to be that percentage split among all the outside agencies, or are we going to establish a percent for each outside agent? That's what we've got to figure out, what are we going to do? So that's a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty thousand on, at ten percent right now, at fifteen percent. Uh, I had it there and then lost it. That's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars at fifteen percent, it's going to be two hundred and sixty thousand at twenty percent, and, you know, Bristol's a small city, and once these taxpayers see big numbers going to these outside agencies, it ruffles feathers. They work hard to pay their taxes. They work hard to have what they have, and when they see huge numbers going for stuff that they really don't believe in, it's, 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 it puts a sour taste in their mouth, so. Do we need these agencies? Absolutely, we do. We've got to figure out what's fair to everybody.
That's why.
But there is a percentage.
That's why my only platform is this, you, you budget an X amount, but you issue it out on a project-to-project basis. There has to be value return to the taxpayer, so they can put together a twenty-four-month plan, we got twenty projects we want to do at CBB, we want to do X, Y, and Z. Come to us with what those are, how they're going to measure them, how they're going to invest in them, and so we can track the return on that. Mayor keeps mentioning return on investment, that's what you do, you do a project-by-project basis, you give cash out for each project, and you come back with measurables to show, show how that project went. And then you know if you got a return on it or not.
Yeah.
And that's what you need to do for a couple of years till we understand how we drive lodging and meals, because right now, we, we do not understand that because of the numbers. We've reduced, it's went up, right? And I'll say it one more time, decisions made on where you stay in a hotel are not made at the Chamber of Commerce, I'm sorry. I know travelers, I've been traveling, right? That's not how it's made, but we, we can use them as an advertising and marketing tenant of ours to help drive those decisions, you can do that. And you say, lay out those projects, it's going to drive those decisions of where to stay, and then give them the money to do so. If it means special targeted marketing online, if it means going to hotels.com, whatever it means, we can give them the money, by project-by-project basis, and then see what the return is. And there, and there's a magic in that. You will find one or two of those projects that's going to hit on a real return on that money, and then you can give them more money. Two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, there's no end to that if the dollars come back, right? Imagine a hundred dollar spend in a hotel room, if they figure out a way to, to advertise online, and we give some online, um, advertiser, one dollar for every hundred dollar secured lodging, that's a win-win, right? That's clearly a win, and it could be a huge windfall for us and the chamber, but that's what, that's the way we got to do it. Because a percent, you don't know where it's going, and it's just taxpayer money flowing. And, you know, that, that way, you, it's just kind of hit or miss. You've got to really target how you spend this money on very specific items, because our job is to take taxpayer money and to drive those revenue tax bases up. And the only way to do that is to apply that money targeted on certain avenues to see what works.
Well, I don't disagree with that, there needs to be checks and balances, I mean, with, with everything, and, uh, you know, I agree with you, I, I, when I'm traveling, I get a motel when I'm tired. If I'm not tired, I keep it going, you know, it's, that, that's just the way I am. And, uh, but, you know, they are an important vital piece of part to the city, so they need, they need funding, it's just how much funding. And I'm not opposed to, you know, um, projects that they come forth with and request the funding then, uh, because I've never seen their books, I don't know where the money goes. But I'm, I'm just saying that the taxpayers are not going to be happy when they're seeing large dollars amounts go to these outside agencies. Some will, because they use it all the time, it's a network, it's, it's, it's a group that flows together. I'm talking about the masses out there that truly pays the city's bills, we got to keep it reasonable.
I think that's where you get back to return on investment. So, say you're, say you're giving the, you're giving Discover Bristol ten percent, and that can be a big eye-popping number at some point, if things go really well, that could be a lot of money. But then you're taking that other ninety percent, and you're putting it back into the other things that we do in the city. So, I mean, just if, like, if we had done, if we'd done ten percent out of the one point three, that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the rest of that money comes to the city for us to use for other things. So yes, that's a big number, but the other ninety percent of that one point three, or whatever it would have been, is coming back to the city for us to use for other things, for other projects, for stuff we need to do. So, I mean, I don't, you know, I think, I think the percentage is, is the direction we need to be moving in, but, but, you know, maybe kind of working off what Mr. Mumpower said, you know, it could be something, if there's a special project where you're coming to ask for more money, maybe that's where that base number comes in, you know? Our base is X, if you have a big special project like, um, like the All-Star Race was, or, um, the Gentleman of the Road concert a few years ago, uh, you know, those are, those are special projects which may require some kind of additional money to, to help market us. Um, but, but you can see from these numbers, I would, I would refuse to believe that our increase in lodging taxes is, is mostly from people who just happen to get tired when they hit the Virginia-Tennessee line. I mean, it is, it is targeted marketing, the people are coming here on purpose and for a reason. I mean, I'm sure we have a portion of these people who just happen to be, as you all have said, you know, passing through, but, but the increases that we've had are not solely from people who just left their house eight hours ago and hit here at ten o'clock at night.
So one way to drive incremental, um, incentive for the chamber is the way they do sales commissions, so if you decide to do a percentage, you do a base percent annually, we'll say five percent's their base. And then they get a percent on all incremental revenues from tax-based increase. Over the last three-year base average, anything incremental above that, they get a little bit higher percent. So that's an incentive now, right? Just the way you drive sales incentives, right? You sell more, we give you more. So that kind of forces the return on the investment. If you don't sell anymore, it's zero. Ten percent of zero is zero.
And if memory serves me correct, I, I don't want to get negative on, on anything, but if, 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 if my memory is correct, we have data that shows, cutting the chamber, cutting these outside agencies, our lodging taxes was better the year before, I mean, the better that year that they got cut than they was the year before when they was fully funded. So, when you, when you look at the data, I have to come to the conclusion that most people stopping and staying at motels, because Interstate eighty-one is a major vein through this country. They get tired, they stop and get a motel room. Is there reservations? Absolutely, there is. Motels always have reservations, but what is the majority of the rooms being rented? I have to say, it's travelers that have put a lot, a lot of miles behind them, and they're ready for a room that night, and they just happen to be coming through Bristol.
You know, I think there's some of that. There's business travelers, there's some of that, but that's missing the point of Bristol as a destination, because what you're talking about is those people that are stopping, they're going somewhere else. Where are they going? How did they know to go there? Somebody had to, to market it to them, to tell them, this is what this place that they're going to has, whether it be, uh, outdoor recreation, or, or music, or, or, in our case, NASCAR racing, we have all of those things. That's why people come here, and they come here specifically for that, not just, some people will stop along the way, some people come here for, for just business reasons, but there's people that come here specifically for those things, and they need to know, you know, what this region has to offer, and, and they may come and stay in Bristol, but go up the Creeper Trail, or go to Barter, or go drive the Crooked Road, but because Bristol is that junction between the interstate and where they want to go, they can pull over, stop, get up the next morning, go wherever they want to go in southwest Virginia or northeast Tennessee, so, you know, letting them know all of those things, and, and particularly that all the things they might want to do, I mean, you know, that's what the CBB is doing, it's marketing Bristol as a destination, not just a, a, I'm tired and stopping, I mean, those people are going somewhere, and they're not coming here, because they're just stopping on the way, from what you're saying. So, what we need is people that's going to come here and stay, and, and spend a couple of days, or, or, and, and, you know, shop downtown, eat at our restaurants, because then we get not just the lodging tax, we get the sales tax, we get the meals tax, we get other things. Plus, you know, a lot of that, then they'll, if they like it, they'll come back again, or tell somebody, so, you know, that's, it's more than just the, the weary traveler pulling over, but, uh, you know, I think, I don't know, and, you know, we can keep going if you want, but it seems, again, I think there's some kind of consensus to come up with a base number, uh, a floor, and I've always said that, because that's one thing all of these agencies need, is, um, some certainty, because it goes up and down. And then I guess the other thing, and we may want to bring that in and, and have a discussion, just talk about all three of these, because like you're saying, you know, what, how do you deal with all of them? And, um, I'll just throw it out there, in my mind, lodging makes sense for the CBB, because they're driving, they're marketing this as a destination, trying to get people to come here and stay in a hotel, to stay. To, to, that there's enough stuff to do, that you don't just pull over in the middle of the day, that you spend the night, at least one, hopefully multiple nights, and really see all that our region has to offer. Um, the museum and Birthplace of Country Music, through the museum and Redmond Roots, it's more event-oriented. I mean, yeah, those, some of those people stay, but a lot of the people are coming specifically for an event, so I think, you know, the, probably the best metric for that would be the admissions tax, because those are taxes, we can track that when people go through the museum, come to an event, not necessarily, you know, their events, but other events as well. Um, so again, or maybe some combination, and then Believe in Bristol. Um, so again, or maybe some combination, and then believe in Bristol. I, you know, their, their goal, yes, they have events, but their goal is not necessarily to bring people here like the CVB does. Their goal is to strengthen downtown and downtown businesses. So they do have the events that attract mostly people in the community so that they can come downtown, see the shops, experience things. But really, they do a lot more in terms of, uh, developing businesses and things downtown. So some form of, of, uh, you know, what's the level of investment downtown? When you have two major investments, like the Bristol Hotel, or the Hotel Bristol and the Sessions Hotel, I mean, that boosts up downtown. When you have people investing in loss downtown, you know, so that has nothing to do really with lodging tax. But that's really part of what Believe in Bristol is trying to do, is get that capital investment in our downtown. And we see that through, uh, increasing real estate tax from the, as the property values go up downtown. So, again, I'm not sure what all these metrics are. That's why we started with the CVB, cause I think it's the easiest to deal with. Cause with lodging, I know, um, the Vice Mayor mentioned last time something about some kinda hybrid funding too. But, um, which some of these other organizations may work better with. So, um, I don't know.
Well, I definitely agree, um, you know, that, that tourism is important here in Bristol. You know, for anyone who's maybe watching at home and they don't really know what the CVB does. You know, we're, we're talking about tourism dollars. And, and I hear people say all the time, "We don't wanna base our entire economy around tourism." And I completely agree. People say, "We need to get this manufacturer in here." And, um, you know, it, we're definitely working on it. Uh, we're definitely trying. When, you know, a company says, like, say GM or Ford, "We're gonna open a plant and hire, you know, 3,000 people." We're trying to get them here to Bristol. But there's also an, an additional thousand localities in every state in the nation that's trying to get them to come as well. So, um, you know, we, we currently do pretty well with tourism. Um, I think when you talk to, you know, business owners in downtown and, and they talk about the big stuff, the race, Rhythm and Roots, uh, the Ken Burns documentary at the museum. You mentioned the, the concert that was downtown a few years ago, Mumford and Sons. Those are the times when, you know, you hear the business owners downtown say, "It was a great weekend, we made a lot of money, we had to hire more people, you know, our employees made money." Um, and we can track it too as a city. We see the lodging taxes and the meal taxes. So, you know, the old saying is, "If it's, if it's not broke, don't fix it." Tourism is already going pretty well and we have an opportunity for another big tourism draw, uh, coming in. Uh, you know, we're talking about the, the casino. So, so it's definitely, uh, something that brings people into Bristol. Um, the tourism dollars are really felt, uh, and they're put to good use. So I do think Bristol has an opportunity over the next, say, 24 months to, to really market our city, to make sure people come. And we talked about it a little earlier. You know, there could be a lot of people coming, getting off the interstate and spending a lot of money right there at the mall. I just want us to figure out, we just need to make sure they don't get right back on the interstate and leave. You know, like Mr. LeMayr was saying, you know, maybe they don't just stay in Bristol too. They also are visiting, you know, the Creeper Trail, the Crooked Road in southwest Virginia. But, you know, I want them to also, you know, come and shop downtown, go take a walk at Sugar Hollow and go visit some of the stores at Exit 7 and 5 too. So we really need to have a, kind of a holistic approach to, to, to market all of Bristol. Uh, and, and I think it starts with, uh, the CVB helping us out.
Well, I'll tell you, it, it really boils down to this. If you're gonna come to Bristol, it doesn't matter if you're gonna pull off the interstate, if you're gonna come here on business travel, if you're gonna go to the race, you're gonna go to Google and you're gonna say hotels near Bristol, or hotels in Bristol, Virginia. That's exactly what people do today. And when you do that, Priceline, Books.com, Hotel.com, Travelocity, Trip Advisor. There's not a single city of Bristol website that comes up where you do hotels in Bristol, Virginia. That's how people make decisions. And when you see that, you see the hotels listed right there with the prices. So the next thing they do, they look at the prices, cause people shop based on price. They see Hotel Bristol, 141. Courtyard of Marriott, 80, 90. Daisy Inn, 80. That's how they decide. And then they look at their cards to see where they get the points. And they do all of it right there. 90% of shoppers today that are travelers do it right there. That's how it's done. It's not done by looking in a magazine, it's not done by looking up the city website. It's not done by CVB, I'm sorry, it's not. That's the way it's done. If you don't believe me, go do a marketing study and find out. That's the way travelers set their hotels. Doesn't matter if they're coming in for business or if they're coming in for an event. It's the way they do it, cause they get the best price. Cause guess who's cutting the best rates with the hotels? Bookings.com, Hotels.com, Expedia, they're cutting, they're cutting the massive deals nationwide. So you're gonna go to a Hampton Inn and pay 10 to 15 dollars less if you book online than if you do any other means. And that's why they drive so much business. So what I'm saying is, let's use that, let's give them money to do that, and let's drive business through these websites, cause that's what's already working. And I see everybody looking down. Nobody understands what I'm talking about, obviously. Cause you don't wanna think out of the box. That's thinking out of the box, guys. That's what's driving real lodging today. Go talk to somebody that owns a hotel and they'll tell you 90% of their traffic comes from online sales. Right? So why are we not talking about that? Why is it just 1% out there? You do meals and restaurants the same way. Now, once you got a hotel booked, the next thing you do is go restaurants near Bristol. And you see what's there and you start, you start getting your plans figured out, right? That's the way people do it. Now, we'll give you, if you, if you type in events in Bristol, Discover Bristol comes up. They're in the top three, congratulate them. They should, right? But it's events, has nothing to do with lodging, has nothing to do with meals. We're talking about driving lodging and meals, right? You gotta understand how people make their decisions today, and it's Google. That's a fact. So we gotta start using that and can't put our head in the sand and say, "Let's do it different." Cause that's working and everybody knows it's working. So all I'm saying is, let's target our money that way. Let's, let's do that experiment, if you wanna call it that, and let's prove or disprove that works.
I don't think you're incorrect. I, I don't think you're incorrect on that at all, but, but you might be looking at it incorrectly. I think that, you know, we have a, we have a certain percentage of people who do Google that to come to, come to Bristol to, you know, they're business travelers or they're just passing through or whatever. But we're trying to market Bristol as the destination. Not just, "I'm traveling and I know Bristol's an hour away, I'm gonna Google what's the closest." So, so we're, you know, the plan is, we want to market Bristol as a place where you, you come to. And then, sure, you can Google, "What's a hotel in Bristol that's good?" And you can get a deal or whatever. But, but it shouldn't be, in my mind, driven specifically on, "I know that Bristol's an hour down the road, or I'm gonna hit there when I'm tired, let me see what hotel is there." I don't, I don't think it is only Google. I, I think it's, I think it's a part of it, I think it's a portion of it. But I don't think that is solely what we're doing. I think we're trying to attract a certain group of people who are looking for a certain experience when they go on vacation or have a weekend and they wanna go out of town and go to a destination that's not, you know, Nashville or Asheville or something. But they're looking for something smaller and, and got some outdoor activities. So I think that's the, the type of thing we're going for. So I think that Google's a part of it, but I don't think it's the be-all, end-all. I know it's a, it's a tool, but it's not the be-all, end-all.
I, I understand that. And we can, you know, this could end up being a never-ending conversation. The bottom line is, is the Chamber valuable to the city? Yes, it is. Is the other outside agencies valued, do they have a value to the city? Yes, they do. We need to agree on a, a formula that will sustain them and be fair to the city taxpayers. We don't have a single event going on that I'm aware of in the city, which I don't look for events anyway. But I promise you that every one of our motels are gonna have people in them tonight, whether they're at a 40% or a 50% occupancy rate, I don't know. But we have no events that I'm aware of going on tonight, yet our motels are being booked. So, we can argue this left and right till we're all blue. The bottom line is, we need to figure out a percentage that's fair to the taxpayers, because we are giving the taxpayer dollars that outside people have brought in fresh revenue to this city. And Mr. Mumpower is correct, we need to figure out the dynamics of how to invest that to get more people coming into the city, eating and staying here. We just, we need to figure out what the formula is gonna be and set it in place. That way, these agencies know how to staff. And we don't have our community in an uproar because we're giving too much money away. We can debate forever, who's doing what, where, why, and how. We just need to figure out what's fair. We've all agreed that we all support them and feel like we need them. Now, what's fair to the people that's paying the bill? And what's gonna help sustain them, keep their doors open, and promote this city and grow it from within? There's the million-dollar question we gotta figure out.
Well...
I'm of the mindset, 10% across the board between the three agencies. And as the city grows, their annual payouts grow. Their dollars grow with the city at 10%.
Counsel, I know this isn't necessarily my fight, but, um, based on what Mr. Wingard just said, would counsel consider, I know Mr. Hartley's mentioned lodging tax and admissions tax. Um, would you all consider lumping together the amount of lodging tax and, um, admissions tax as part of that 10%?
I thought about that as Mr. Hartley was talking about that. But then you've got the theater, there's admission tax there. What else do you have admission tax on?
Really, there's only a couple of things in the city. You have the Rhythm and Roots Festival, you have baseball, when we have baseball. Um, you have any concert that is on the Virginia side, which this year there haven't been any. And then, um, of course, the theater at Exit 7.
Okay, does anybody know off the top of their head roughly what admission taxes actually come into the city for Rhythm and Roots?
Well, we can't necessarily, we can't, we can't give that, that number is something that's held by the Commissioner of Revenue that can't be disclosed.
Okay. All right, well, with that being said...
But what, I mean, what I can tell you is, you know, we typically budget, I think every year I've been here, we've budgeted somewhere between 110 and 120,000 dollars in admissions tax every year. Um, now, what that breakdown is, you know, we're just not privy to see that.
I understand that.
For fiscal year 21, we budgeted 16,500. Because there was a significant...
So what does total lodging, meals, and admissions actuals add up to be for the last fiscal year?
It's my personal opinion, we need to keep it simple and stick to just the lodging. And the admissions tax be a bonus. It's not that much anyway. Keep it, keep it as simple as we can.
In my mind, if we're just discussing right now, just discussing Discover Bristol, I think we should just leave it at the lodging tax. I, I don't think we need to start looking at the meals tax and anything like that, or admissions tax. Cause it, cause as you said, admissions tax right now is not very much at all. It, it dropped, uh, it made an enormous drop, if I remember the, wasn't it, wasn't it about 90% drop in admissions tax?
We budgeted a 70% reduction and a loss of a significant payer.
So what you're saying then, the Chamber or CVB should only work on advertising for hotels?
I don't think that's, no, I think that that is the, that's the only, for the most part, you know, it's something you can look at as a quantifiable number. The, cause, cause by and large, people who live in the city do not stay in the hotels in the city. So, so you can kinda use that as the only number that you can measure and say, "Hey, we had this many people from outside the city come in." I mean, cause we could have, if we take in the admissions tax, you know, 75% of that may be people who live in the city, or half that could be people in the city, or it could be 10%. It, it, there's no way to tell for sure who's spending that money, or who's spending the meals tax money. But you know, with very few exceptions, that if you're staying in a hotel, you don't live in the city.
Why does that matter? You're just trying to drive customers? Why do you care if they live in the city or not? If you advertise to drive more customers to eat out, then drive more customers to eat out. And increase the meals tax. So why does it matter where they live inside the city or not?
Well, that's fine, but I don't think that the CVB advertises within the city for you to go eat at a restaurant. I think the restaurants advertise within their market for you to come there. So I don't, I don't think that's what the CVB's job is. I think it's to bring people in from five and six hours away, or, you know, two or three hours away. So I don't think that that would be a good, good metric for you to look at.
Well, they helped advertise during the COVID thing for the local restaurants. Why, why is that any different?
It's kind of a special exception in my mind. I mean, lodging is, is the one thing, like I said, it's a metric that you can say, 99% of these people, 95% of these people do not live in the city, do not pay real estate tax, do not live here. So I mean, that's, that's the only number that I think you can, that you can look at solidly and say they're not from here.
That makes no sense to me at all. Our job is to drive lodging and meals taxes up, period. So if we invest taxpayer money into either one of those entities, is to get a return on that. And to start picking and choosing, say lodging is just because of that, then you're, then you're cutting out the meal side, which is even bigger than the lodging, right? And it doesn't matter if it's local or not. Drive people from Kingsport here, drive people from Johnson City to eat here. That drives up meals taxes, right? So we spend our money on what drives those numbers up. And I don't care where they live here or not, doesn't matter, they're customers. They choose to spend their money how they choose to spend their money. So let's give them money to be our marketing advertising arm to drive those numbers up, all those numbers.
But if, if you follow that thought to its logical conclusion, as Mr. Wingard has said, taxpayers don't like the idea of seeing a big eye-popping number coming from the city to a, what's effectively a private entity. You know, you can make the argument that this 10% coming from lodging, as I've said, is mostly not people who live in the city. You can say, "Oh, this is people who are outside who are paying this tax." But you can't make that same argument with meals tax, because I eat out, I know I pay meals tax, you eat out, I know you pay meals tax. So then all of a sudden, instead of mostly people from the outside paying this tax and giving this money to the CVB, it's people who live in the city who are also giving the money to the CVB. And then I think that is when you'd have more people who are upset, in my mind, because they have more vested interest in those specific taxes going to that organization.
I have to say that the meals tax, the vast majority of that is the people that live here, the Bristolians.
Local.
The vast majority. We eat out all the time.
You're right, but it doesn't matter. People from Bristol, Tennessee come over here. You're trying to advertise to bring people from Kingsport, Elizabethan, Bristol, Tennessee. That's what you, that's what you're trying to drive those numbers up, right? And so the assumption is not that we have a high percent. The assumption is that we have enough money to do the right advertising to drive that customer base.
Here's, I'm gonna say something that's probably gonna be thought of as stupid.
Say it.
But I'm gonna say it.
Say it.
I don't think there's anybody coming to eat a meal so far enough away that they're gonna pay for a motel room. But they're gonna come to a motel and stay traveling and eat at a restaurant. Now, if somebody thought that was stupid, that's fine. But I don't think anybody's ever gonna come to a Bristol restaurant just to eat and then end up renting a motel room.
Nobody said that was true.
So what, we do need to concentrate on the motel rooms, because that is where the money's made and that money is rolling over into the restaurants.
We got more money coming in on meals taxes, we need to look at both of them.
Yeah, because you go out and eat too much.
No! You can look at the numbers, it's not me, you're, you're bringing in more tax revenues to this city for meals than you are lodging.
Meals tax.
Right.
Cause we all go out and eat.
So if you, if you got a business and you're selling more Camaros than you are Mustangs, you're gonna spend your advertising dollars on Camaros. You're not gonna spend it on Mustangs. You spend it where, where the money's coming in.
But the meals tax, the vast majority of it is local money.
Doesn't matter, it's tax revenues.
Local money rolling around, we need to keep, we need to get more outside tax dollars in here.
Your assumption is it's Bristol, Virginia's eating, but there's a lot of Bristol, Tennessee, a lot of Kingsport, there's a lot of Abingdon, there's a lot of outlying folks that are outside the city limits that come here to eat.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if you think, if you think on it that way, I mean, i- if I'm running the Red Lobster at Exit 7, I'm not going to wait for the CVB to advertise for me. I'm gonna send out a targeted mailer in the... going to send out a targeted mailer in the mail, you know, with the Sunday paper. I'm going to run an ad on TV or have those targeted ads on Facebook or Twitter or whatever. You know, that's how you get people to spend money locally. They run ads locally to people who are here and have more of a chance to spend the money here. I think the CVB, if we ever, if we ever see an ad from Discover Bristol for Bristol, they're doing something wrong. We don't need to see their ads. The people who live six hours away need to see their ads. I mean, I've never, I mean, there are other cities that have chambers. Johnson City, Smith County has a chamber. I've never seen ads for those places because we're too close. These are, they spend their money elsewhere to advertise. And because those are the people who will come here and not eat and get a hotel, but get a hotel and eat, I hope.
Okay. Well, once again, I'm going to say this could be a never-ending conversation. I'm of the mindset that we need to zero in on the lodging taxes, and it needs, and I'm going to say that it needs to be 10% split among the three agencies. And if somebody disagrees with that, then that's what we need to talk about. Or we're going to keep talking about this forever. Now, if we do a percentage for the Chamber, and then the next agency comes in here and we set a number for them, we could easily creep up to 15% to 20%. And I'm telling you right now, the taxpayers out there are not going to like that. So, we need to fix, we need to set, zero in on a fixed number that is split between them. Forget about the meals tax. Forget about the entertainment tax. The lodging tax, the vast majority of, well, not the vast majority, 100% of our lodging tax is coming from outside revenue. That is not giving away the taxpayers' money to fund these agencies. And if it grows to a huge number, this city can still look at that taxpayer in the eye and say, "Them tax dollars came from outside this area, and these agencies are working diligently to keep that outside money coming in. This was not money that came out of your pocket. This all came from outside." But you go mixing in this tax, that tax, then it's going to get into the Bristolians' pockets somehow, some way. That's my two cents. If somebody thinks it needs to be 15, speak up. If you think it needs to be 40, speak up. Because we need, we need to work through this.
I mean, I will say, 10% divided among three, I think is too low. And then the other thing begs the question, if you take 10% and divide it among three, how did you divide it? It's a whole, I mean, so you've got to say 7, 2, and 1, 6, 2, and 2. I mean, you've still got to come up with an actual number for each of those things. You know, we can sit here, I guess, and talk about that. Or if you want, we can resume this next time. I think we have narrowed it down that it needs to be a percentage that's based on lodging and just sit down and look at what has been, what needs to be. And, you know, again, where we're at now and where we want to be may not be the same place either. I think, you know, we could start at one place and say, but for these agencies, I think what they've been asking for, for the last two or three budget cycles, is some kind of floor, some kind of thing that they know with a fair amount of certainty how much money they can expect and, you know, to incentivize them. And it be based on, you know, what they're doing, I think is a good way to do that. So, you know, if we want to keep discussion going, we can. If you want to wait and come back at the next meeting and everybody throw out some numbers, we can do it then. But I would say 10 among the three just, to me, seems a little, and then it still begs that question of how you divide among the three.
Okay. I could sit here and do the math. But if we could get the city to come up with the numbers at 10%, 12%, 14%, 16%, 18%, 20%, get those numbers for the next time that we meet, then we can break it out between the three and see what kind of dollars amount they would be getting if we went with this percentage. And everybody needs to keep in mind that it is not the city paying to keep their entities up and running. The Chamber, if you're going to be a member of it, you're going to pay your dues. Everybody pays their dues to the Chamber. The city is just additional monies to them. Same with Birthplace of Country Music. The ticket sales is what's paying their bills. This is just additional money. It's not our job to make them rich. And we need to keep that in mind. But I'm going to request that we have a breakdown of percentages based on the lodging taxes for the next time we meet.
Can I ask for just a little bit of clarification? Do you want, is counsel talking about a percentage of the upcoming budget number, or do you want that percentage based on historical collections?
Historical.
Historical?
Historical.
I think doing it like, because you can see where you've been.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, I think what's coming up, who knows? I mean, right now, we could all take a guess at what's coming up, and maybe one of us might be right.
So, the anticipated budget for the upcoming year, funding for the, I'm just making sure I'm clear?
Yeah. Because I think, too, this is, it lets us see where things, where things were, where they've been. And then, you know, that way without, because we're too far. That's one reason I think it's good to have this discussion outside the budget because we're not talking about what's coming up next year. We're just talking more in general terms, but looking at where we've been. And then when we get to the budget, then we can see if that number squared up.
Councilman Wingard, you want to see data based on collections June 30th, 2020?
That's fine.
Or do you want an average?
That's fine. We just need a screenshot of a fiscal year 20...
2020.
20, 1920 will be fine. And then just give us the percentages. I don't think you have to break down every single percentage, but, you know, do 2% increments.
Well, I'd say this last fiscal year was an anomaly because of what happened in the spring. I think you got to...
That's this year.
That's what I mean. So, you got to go a year prior to that and then take a two-year average and use those numbers.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
It may be helpful. In addition to that, it may be helpful if you, if you did something that said, "If we give them X number of dollars and split it up between the three, then they get this number." You know what I'm saying? It may be helpful if you included something that said, for, I'm not saying we're doing 20, but say it said, "If we give them 20% of the lodging tax," then breaking up that 20, if half goes to BC, half goes to CVB and a quarter goes to BCM and a quarter goes to, I believe, in Bristol, then the actual numbers based on the last one would be this. Does that make sense?
Just last question, so I get the math right. Do you want economic incentives taken off of that? We do pay economic incentives on some of these revenues. Do you want that deducted?
Yeah, that needs to be deducted.
Yeah, that's not true tax revenue.
Yeah. Yeah, that needs to be taken out.
Okay. Well, then I think we'll continue this discussion next time. And I appreciate it. Like last time, I think it's a good discussion. It's good to have these. And, you know, to the point earlier with the second item on the agenda, we probably ought to look at talking a little bit about solid waste before we get to the budget as well. It might be helpful to do that at some point, talk about it outside of the budget process. Okay. So, let's move...
Did I sign up to speak over there?
No, you didn't. This is just for council discussion, Ms. Marney.
I thought I signed up to speak over there.
No. Well, there's, one, there's no place for it. But these, when we have a council discussion, it's just to give us a chance, all five, to sit down.
I heard that before.
I know.
Because I actually did show, so.
Well, you can tell me here in a minute after we finish the meeting. If there are anyone else that's willing to listen to you, I'll listen. So, I said, I said, "I'll be more than happy to listen to what you've got to say here in just a minute when we finish the meeting." So, all right. Next item is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of council?
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. No further business. We stand adjourned.